Welcome to the Milford Select Board meeting of March 10, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of the Milford Town Hall. Tonight, we're very honored to have a special guest with us as well as members of the Milford Police Department. We have Officer Yan Wade, who has received the 2025 Black Excellence Award from the MBLLC for his unwavering dedication and his compassion to the service and his service to the community. And it's a very prestigious award that the officer has won, received, and so I'm going to open it up. I'm going to turn it over to the Chief of Police. Chief Tassino?
Hello, hello, and good evening. Thank you for having us here, and thank you for honoring Officer Wade. I'm very happy that Chief Olafland's in here because he actually hired Yan back in 2016. You know, I don't know where to start with such an individual as Yan Wade. To say that we're lucky to have him, the town is fortunate, those are understatements. It doesn't happen often that you have a young officer that starts in a department as a dispatcher. He actually was an intern with us and came a dispatcher, and it wasn't just a passion to be a police officer, but you saw in him compassion and the need and desire to interact with people. And, you know, for me, as an administrator and, you know, a 33-year paramedic and a police officer, I've always been taken back by Yan. Compassion first, authority after, and he's just a credit to the department. He's a delight to work with. To say that we're lucky to have him is an understatement. You know, the showing of support from his fellow special operations officers, his commanders, his frontline supervisors. And it's, you know, bittersweet because when people find out they could have came tonight, they would have packed this place for Yan. That's the kind of reputation that he has. So to see that he was honored to, you know, be contacted by Rep. Brian Murray and, you know, because I know Attorney Murray's been moved by Yan's exploits through town, it's just that constant, right? He's that constant compassion weighed with authority because we don't want that pugilistic sense of policing. And Yan knows how to be compassionate. He goes above and beyond. He's good to his fellow officers. When he comes in the station with his small children, he has his hands full. But that's the way it's supposed to be, you know, when you have small children. I can't say that he's a better police officer than I am yet, but he's certainly a better person. But he's a better person than I am.
That's easy to say.
Yeah, yeah. He's a better person than I am, and I'm just lucky to have him working with me, and I hope he enjoys working with us as much as we enjoy working with him.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
State Rep. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So each year, the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus, which is a very active group at the State House, looks for nominations for black leaders, black leaders of excellence who make a difference in their community, serve their community in remarkable ways. So as I saw that notification circulate, I thought of Officer Wade and what he's done in Milford, whether it was buying food for a homeless person, getting involved in some of the very dangerous operations that he does with his team, or just patrolling the streets of Milford. I've known him to be very dedicated, very compassionate. So I reached out to the chief because I didn't want to tell him, I didn't want to indicate that I was going to nominate him for this award. So the chief was able to get me background information on him. We submitted the nomination, and the nomination was accepted. And Officer Wade got the opportunity a couple of Fridays ago, I think, to go into the State House at the ceremony where they recognize black leaders from all across the Commonwealth. So I think that the work that he does is a tribute not only to the town of Milford but also Police Department, and I was certainly proud to have him there representing the town and the Police Department at the State House.
Good. Thank you. Paul?
Sure, thank you. Officer Wade, you know, congratulations and Rob for your guidance with Officer Wade and Brian for nominating him too. You are an inspiration for all of us to actually, the acknowledgement that you're getting this evening is definitely an inspiration to everybody. You are, like they mentioned, a credit to our town, and we're very, very proud to have you. We're so happy that you are continuing your service with us, and we are, again, to repeat myself, for effectiveness, you have a credit, and we're very lucky to have you. Keep that diligence and compassion that you have, and the sky's the limit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom?
There's so many good things I could say about this young man. I first met Yan when he came in as an intern, as was mentioned by the chief, and his internship was up and he never left. He continued to come to the Milford Police Department and help us in any way that he could, so I figured he should ought to get paid for some of it, so we put him on as a dispatcher. He may remember and reflect back that his original intention was he wanted to be a federal agent, and I was able to persuade him that you can end up anywhere they want to send you in the world, and that's not always a great thing, especially at the time he was engaged. And I don't know that his wife now would appreciate world travel. I persuaded him, and he's been with us ever since, and we're the beneficiaries of, just a good person who does care about people. I can remember coming out of church in Sacred Heart and I mentioned to Mike Walsh, and an elderly gentleman came up to me and asked me what his name was, and I told him, and he said to me, you know, he's so pleasant and he's such a nice person, and that's what you generally hear about Yan Wade. That and people will tell you that he's related to me, and he knows that. He likes to tell people that we're cousins, but just a great kid, phenomenal police officer. Fortunate to have him, and to say he's deserving of an award of this kind, any type of award that would speak to his leadership, his commitment, well deserved, well deserved. Congratulations, Yan.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. So I can tell you're uncomfortable sitting in that seat because you don't like all these kind words said about you because of the type of person that you are, and it's a testament to you. Selectman Olafland made reference to Sacred Heart Church, and I've watched you many a morning working that intersection and always with a big smile, people crossing the street, and I listen, I'm very observant, I hear you always say hello, good morning, and people respond, and, you know, that's just a, just a great trait to have as a police officer, to take the time, you know, to the citizens, to reach out to them. And Selectman Olafland and Chief Tassino have always said, anybody, anybody can put handcuffs on somebody and throw them in a jail cell. And thank God the philosophy of the Milford Police Department, and I congratulate all of you behind the chief and Yan and State Rep. Brian Murray for your compassion to our community because you really, you know, anybody can do that, but you don't, you don't. And that's a testament, you know, to you. We use a word, compassion, around here a lot when we talk about our police and our fire department because it's true. That's the number one word, compassion for the citizens in our community. And I've witnessed your compassion firsthand, and it's just, it's unbelievable. The kindness, the caring, you know, the kind words, the patience, the calmness in a very, very difficult situation, and you're able to go in and just diffuse it. That's a testament to you, you know, and so it's, I thank Representative Murray for putting your name in for this award. I congratulate you because, in my opinion, if anybody deserves it in the state of Massachusetts, it's you because you are, in my opinion, a true leader. You vote every single day on the streets of this community and try and set an example every single day. And the chief made reference to your family, and you've got a family to raise, and, you know, you're trying to balance all that, and you just do a great job. So congratulations. I'm going to let Representative Murray give his citation away first, and then I'll give one from the town of Milford. But again, congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, this is a citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. It reads as follows, "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Yan Wade in recognition of receiving the 2025 Black Excellence Award from the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus and for serving your community with dedication, compassion, and diligence. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." This is dated February 28, 2025, which was the date of the ceremony at the State House. This is signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and offered by myself, State Representative Brian Murray. Yan?
Thank you.
Come on right up here, sir.
Stand up for that one.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
You deserve it. So the town of Milford, Massachusetts, be it known that the Select Board hereby offer their congratulations to Yan Wade in recognition of receiving the 2025 Black Excellence Award from the MBLLC and for your unwavering dedication, most important word, and compassionate service to this community. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Select Board extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all of your endeavors. Given this 10th day of March, 2025, signed Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, Thomas J. Olafland, Esquire, and Paul A. Mathiely, all members of Milford.
Congratulations. Thank you, all the officers that are here this evening for everything you do every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Hang up, though. Can't wait.
Yep. Do you want to say anything?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Come on, you don't want to say something? It's easy.
I'm honored, thank you.
It was tough just getting him to the State House.
Sometimes silence speaks volumes.
Yeah, I know, yeah, you know. Well, thank you very, very much. Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're a great representative for this force. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May we do a quick photo with the board?
Sure, absolutely. Gonna return just for a beautiful photo.
This is a beautiful chief. I'll cut you off, but you're in with us.
Photoshop.
Photoshop.
Good evening, thank you. We took a slight pause to take some pictures with the officers that received that prestigious award from the state of Massachusetts. So we're back, and our first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve signing of the warrant.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Roll call. Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the regular session minutes from February 24.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes of February 24, 2025.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay, and last we have under agenda item A is the approval of the executive session minutes from February 24, 2025, I'm sorry, the regular, no, executive session minutes, February 24, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Okay, we have the two of them, so I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the executive session minutes for the 5:00 PM executive session on February 24, 2025.
We already did that one.
Okay, that was the regular meeting.
I didn't get to vote on that because I was not present. I can vote on half of it. I was not present.
Okay.
The water, the negotiation, so I believe that we have to do two votes for the 5:00 PM executive session because I was present.
Okay.
The police union.
All right, and executive, and then a approval of the executive session minutes for the police negotiation section of the February 24, 2025, meeting held at 5:00 PM.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous with a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Now you're gonna do the 6:00 PM.
But is this where we had the?
Yes.
They have to do the 5:00.
Second half of the 5:00 PM.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
And also approval of.
I repeat myself.
Okay.
Exactly. Approval of the executive session minutes of February 24, 2025 at 5:00 PM, the second part, which included the negotiations of the water company employees.
And I would second that as well with a roll call?
Aye.
And aye as well. So that's the executive session for 5:00 PM.
What was the one with the correction?
Is there a correction on?
Actually, it was that one. I'll take care of it.
That one?
Okay, good, okay, thank you. Thanks, Rick.
All right, and now we have the approval of the executive session minutes for February 24, 2025 at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the executive session minutes for February 24, 2025 at the 6:00 PM executive session meeting.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay, so that's the signing of the warrant and approval of all the minutes. Next agenda item is public hearings. Do we have any public hearings tonight? We do not, seeing no public hearings. We move right on to scheduled appointments, and the first scheduled appointment is our Police Chief to discuss staffing in the department. Chief Tassino?
Good evening once again.
Good evening.
Good night to be here, right? Lot of good stuff. That was great. Thank you to the board for honoring Yan. I don't think there's a more deserving person, and, you know, the department's very grateful that he was acknowledged, so again, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So we have a couple of things, I know we have to go over in front of you, but what we have is, this is a request to increase the staffing, and I'm gonna quote the great Alchria, "Tell me what you want, tell me what you need, and tell me what you can't live without." So in this, we're talking about four different things. Actually, it's three different things, but four positions. So the first position, we're talking about a school resource officer, and let's pause there, you know, as we go through these positions. The school resource officer, we have two. Okay, we have two school resource officers, Officer Bavosi and Officer Canelo. And I'll tell you, other towns that are close to our size have at least three, some even have a fourth. The Milford Police Department is structured as such that our school resource officers, when it comes to any type of sexual assault or indecent assault, even outside of the school, family services unit and the SROs are the ones that investigate that. They're trained investigators, they work with the district attorney's office. The detective division of the Milford Police Department certainly can help out, but they're so busy and inundated. What I did is, they handle adult sexual assault, so from 18 up, because it makes it, it's become its own unique, you know, there's a way to testify, there's evidence to gather, and there's a certain approach. So they're inundated with, unfortunately, this is the life and times we live in, whether it be cybercrime, actual physical crime, our SROs handle a multitude of that, not to mention, these are the guys and gals in the schools that have, you know, weapons on their hip. They are the first responder to a mass casualty incident at the schools. I don't think there are two better school resources, resource officers than Officer Bavosi and Officer Canelo. To say that they are beloved at the schools is an understatement, and, you know, I've had both of them come in off duty when a couple of the students were involved or victims of crimes, and when they saw Anthony Bavosi or Cody Canelo, to say that they'd lit up, had honest, candid conversations with them, I mean, that's what you want. It's just amazing the rapport they have with these students. With that said, you know, I'll be quite honest with you, we spread them thin. We spread the two of them very thin. They're covering a vast area, they don't have a lot of time to spend at the elementary school, and of course, you know, the incidence of occurrence, we'll call them, at the elementary school are very low, but they still need the attention. And, you know, I know Anthony Bavosi feels like things go by the wayside because there's so many, so many hours in the day for the things that he handles, and they work together, right? They all work together. So this would be somebody that we'd add to our school resource division, but also working with family services units, so mental health, intervention. This is what our school resource officers do, it's a collaborative effort, and that's why we see Piper, the care dog, in a lot of the schools, right? Because Sergeant Pinto from Family Services has this working relationship and goes in. So that's first and foremost, and that's, you know, a need. I'm here to tell you, we need that. That's a position we need. I'll jump right into another need that I have in here is a training sergeant's position, is that's a sergeant whose sole purpose, you know, main part of their job is to conduct, monitor, implement, and be compliant with training. I'm here to tell you, police reform, I believe, got it right. Training is the cornerstone of any successful organization, and certainly policing, I would say it's paramount. What we find when it comes to judicial review and in court, I think that our training is forefront, okay? To say that it's scrutinized is an understatement, and certainly the post commission really, really beats the drum of active progressive training, and that's something I agree with. It's its own thing. We just went over our CPR first responder training, we just redid all our officers, and one of the sergeants who does training, we had to split it between him covering patrol and doing training. I mean, that's not a good look. You know, we're lucky that we have a bunch of other people who are trained to do these things, but you need somebody whose name is on the dotted line, that's their responsibility, they run training division. I think that, you know, I tip a cap to the fire department, they've had training officer for quite some time because they know how serious training is and to monitor that training and make sure that you're compliant and beyond. So that's the training sergeant's position. The other position, it's actually two positions, is the traffic safety unit. I think everybody in the room, especially the Select Board and Attorney Valani will appreciate traffic safety and traffic enforcement, we get inundated with complaints, traffic. I know the board does, I certainly do, and again, a traffic safety unit, a traffic safety team would be able to address these issues. And, you know, you can look at it and say, well, the police should be addressing them. We do address them. We are diligent in our traffic safety, and we've had a lot of good response from the community. The problem, and again, I'm not mentioning names or locations for a reason, I like to tell everybody when I'm intentionally being vague, so I met with a resident because they had continued complaints about speeding, and when I met with this person, I went out to location and they said, jeez, it was great, chief, they were here, they came out just like you promised. They were here for 10 minutes. And I said, well, I can't have them sit here. They have to go answer calls. And that's what this answers. To have a traffic safety division that could follow up on, you know, accidents, they would be part of the recon team, they would do directed patrol, they would do a lot of grant work, grants that we would be able to get because we had a traffic safety unit. We do pretty well with the grants now, but we're limited in the scope because we don't have a traffic safety division. I'll also argue there are towns our size that have traffic safety units. And this is also a unit that would augment patrol, having these two officers assigned to this unit that could go out and do directed enforcement in OUI, because like I can, you know, I can tell everybody in this room, I can't say that, you know, you're gonna have direct impact by overdose, but I can promise you, the longer you go without getting into a car accident, the closer you are to getting into a car accident. That's a fact. The insurance companies aren't in this business just for practice. It's a matter of time, and my father used to say, the best thing you can do is get car insurance because at some point you're gonna, you're gonna use it. With that said, I've also had great conversations with Zach Taylor, the finance director, about what we can afford to do, what we should do, and what maybe we can wait until October to do. And Zach, again, my thanks to Zach and his whole team, I think the vision would be, if we have to come out of here tonight with anything, it would be that SRO position and that training sergeant's position and plan for the traffic safety unit down the road in the fall at October, when October comes around, and bring it up then at town meeting. But that's what you have in front of you, you have the cost breakdown in front of you, and I ask for your serious consideration of at least those two spots, the school resource and the training sergeant. And again, we can revisit the traffic safety division. The reason why we did all this is, again, these are the needs, I believe, of the community that we serve, and certainly that traffic safety division, once it's up and running, and I know at some point we'll get there, but it's really gonna make a difference.
Thank you, Chief. Paul?
Yeah. Chief, thank you so much. Like I says, this is, actually shows that, you know, you are really concerned about the future of the department, where it stands now and where it's gonna be. It's a proactive approach in addressing the growing needs of the community, and to me, I think it's a unique approach for the simple reason, not just asking for four officers that are going to be more or less taking up a certain shift, you know, walking the beat or something like that. You more or less have them strategically located, you have a position or in a responsibility for each and every one, which is what I liked about it, you know, in other words, I want four officers, but they're gonna be doing this in specialty work.
Sure.
You know, of course, with the police reform that we had back several years ago, we need a training officer, and, you know, someone that does it on a continuous basis, not every now and then that he needs to probably go answer a call and then come back and continue, where did I leave off? That's a very important part of police. Like you said, without training, what good is the department?
Correct.
You know, which I really appreciate. The school officer, definitely, we have two now. Is that usually based on population of the school or what?
Yeah. Like a school nurse would be. Yeah, it's based on population, but, you know, unfortunately, it's also based in the life and times we live in.
Right.
There's a whole nother world that, you know, kids, adolescents are living in, in the cyber world. And to say that our officers, our detective bureau spends a considerable amount of time addressing those complaints, addressing things like cyberbullying, predatory responses. I mean, we honored Yan Wade here, but not long ago, himself with Detective Olafland and people from the detective bureau were honored by Homeland Security because of the work they did with sex trafficking. I mean, this is what's going on. So to have another person to build in that unit and that collaborative team really has benefit.
That's right. And like I said, it also builds that relationship up with the, with the young student.
Absolutely.
At that age, so they get. So they're getting a very good positive image and a very good, you know, feedback from the, a police officer.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's what we need today more than ever. Again, again, you know, which is what we really appreciate too, is the traffic officers. And I'm glad you asked for two, because that's something that is, becomes something very big in this town, not only traffic wise, but the parking part of the situation.
And they would do both.
And, I know. And, 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 and that's where we, you know, as this select board gets a lot of the concerns from, you know, that when, when people call, it's about traffic, it's about parking, it's about situations like that, that people could actually see, the general population could actually see, police work, select board, working together at work for them.
Sure.
You know, and that, and that, and that goes a heck of a long way. Again, I, I appreciate this, I, what I liked with this, with your presentation now, because I was going to ask you if you did speak to finance.
Absolutely.
Because what we have to do as a select board is balance the need to the financial responsibilities, that we don't want to have other essential services being cut or diluted because one department's getting more than the other and whatnot. So that's something we have to watch as well. But anyway, I really appreciate it, and it does show commitment, you know, from, from you, that you're, you're more or less fostering both safety and community trust, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we have to take a look at the police department as well as the fire department. We have had an increase in housing units and population over the past several years. I do think that we're going to take a look at, you know, some of the impacts of those increases upon those two public safety services, but I just want to caution that we also have to be very mindful of just what we're seeing in the newspapers the past couple of days, where the state government is very concerned about whether or not they're going to face substantial budget cuts, our federal funding and otherwise. So impacts on local aid, I just think that, you know, to commit to something this evening, I would caution that we wait till we know a little bit more, particularly you having some conversations with Zach Taylor and Brian Murray.
Thank you. Chief, a couple of questions that I have for you. So adding the school resource officer and adding the training sergeant, are you going to pull from your current?
Yes.
Number of patrol men and women on the road? Or are you looking to pull from them and then hire two to replace the two you move into these positions?
Yes. Yeah, the second, the second example, right. So obviously, those positions would go to in-house candidates.
Correct.
And then we'd backfill higher.
Right. So in other words, it is hiring?
It's adding to the department, right.
Two new, two new people.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You know, as far as the school resource officers, all you have to do is turn the news on.
Yeah.
Every single day, every day, when you watch the news, there's something going on in some school. And I like where you made, in a reference to, you don't have as many issues in the elementary school, but you still have them.
You should do.
You know, which is important. So yeah, a lot of the issues are going on at the high school, but we do have them at the elementary school. So we have to cover all seven schools in our district. And, you know, we have a great department, but, you know, if something happens, you know, we as the board have a responsibility to give you, and I've said this for a long time, to give you the tools that you need to protect the citizens of this community, and that includes the students in our school district. And, you know, and I can understand what Selectman Olafland is saying, and there is a lot of uncertainty coming out of Washington right now. But we can't turn a blind eye to it, because I go back to what we, what we see every, every day on the news, it's just, it's, it's heart wrenching to think that, you know, and I joke about it when I say, and I know it was a long time ago, when I went to school, I worried about what was for lunch and what sport I was playing, and I didn't want to know anything else. These kids, young, you know, children today that are going to school, you know, I really believe someone that were going to school with fear.
True.
And that's nowhere to live a life. And you made reference to Officer Bovosi, building that trust with the student, you know, we've done a great job of putting police officers, you know, just walking around the youth center trying to build trust so that the children will talk to the police officer. You know, there's an old saying, if you held up a plus sign and a negative sign and said, what do you think of a police officer? In the old days, it was a negative sign, it should be a positive sign. Police officer's there to help.
True.
And so we work very hard to build the trust, you know, of, of the children, of the students, and, and so I, I agree with you. I think that we need to make sure that our school district is staffed properly and, and to the best of our ability, you know, safe. You know, and I commend you for looking at that and, and putting that under a need and not a want. You and I both agree, you can never train too much.
Absolutely.
You know, if you look at our military, when you start in basic training?
All training.
Key word, training.
Yeah.
You know, and you just, you, you can't, you know, and again, I go back to, and I hate to repeat myself, turn on the news and watch what's going on, and if the officers that are responding to these calls aren't properly trained, shame on us. Shame on us, because we have a responsibility to make sure that, to them, as well as to the citizens of this community, we have responsibility to the officers, to make sure that when they're responding to a call, that we have given them the training necessary to handle that situation. And, and so, you know, again, I, I commend you for putting that under, under a need. Traffic safety, we witness it every day, every single day, have somebody say to me, oh, the traffic in this town. I've been here almost 40 years, and Route 16's been backed up since the day I arrived, and almost 40 years later, it's still backed up. So I commend you for looking at it, it's definitely something we need to look at. You know, again, you look at the road rage and everything that's going on, you know, I, I agree, I think it's, you know, it's something that we need to look at. But again, I, I agree with you, I think school resource, I think a training sergeant, you know, you know, and I like the way you worded a training sergeant, to give a little bit of authority, so that when you're training, you know, your patrolmen, you know, are cognizant of that they're being trained by an officer.
Correct.
You know, and I'm not saying that in any way they're disrespectful, I know they're not, but just the level of command.
Absolutely.
You know, somebody that's seasoned, that's been on the job for a while, that understands, that knows the street.
That's right.
It's so important, you know, it's not somebody that, and again, no disrespect, but somebody that's worked their way up, but spent 15 years working inside. These are people that have been out on the, on the street, you know, at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, answering calls by themselves.
Absolutely.
And I think that's imperative, especially, especially for a young officer. I really, really do. So I commend you for bringing this forward to us, and I, I couldn't agree with you more. I couldn't agree with you more, and I appreciate you and your department every single day, and I think it's still Chief Nelson's thunder for one second, he makes reference in here that there are increasing calls of service, there's over 16 calls per 24-hour period. Every single one of those calls needs a police officer.
Yep.
So how do you, how do you go out on the street and, and, you know, do your regular patrol work, or your detective work, whatever you're supposed to be doing, and then you have 16 or more called?
Emergencies, yeah.
In a 24-hour period, whether they're medical, and I think Chief would agree, most of them are medical, okay? But you still need a police officer responding with the fire department.
Yeah.
You know, so it's right there.
And, and we have such an amazing working relationship, probably one of the best in the state, I would say. And it is so, you know, dynamic, our profession, there's nothing static about it. You know, you think you walk into a medical, it turns into a fight, you know, I've had the fire department bail me out, I'm going to fight, years ago, you know, getting overwhelmed, and thank God, they were there to help me. So it is that collaborative effort. There is no dividing line, police and fire, EMS, it's this team that addresses these evolving situations. And, you know, for a little context, Franklin Police have more police officers do half the calls.
Yeah.
But as far as the training go, I appreciate the consideration, I, I think that it's really got to be on the forefront of what we do, and as well, the school resource officer and, you know, those other things, certainly, we can look at down the road a little bit.
Hopefully soon, because like I said, parking is, is something that the whole town would see.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I mean, the board could make a motion, or another alternative would be, for your next meeting, I just finished completing the select board budgets, I know Zach is waiting for some other budgets, there are a couple of areas of concern, I will relate that to you. Tom indicated that perhaps he wanted to see if, unless I'm misreading him, where we are on the other budgets.
Michael, I was going to suggest, why don't we do that until the next meeting? That way, we can digest all this, get some, some feedback from the chief.
Okay.
And if any questions that we may have, and also from Zach as well.
Yeah, having Zach in. He can maybe give you a better overall picture next year.
Okay.
Next year.
But thank you very much.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely, yeah, no.
We're with you.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there anything else for me?
Yes.
The surplus and stuff? Yep.
Oh, okay, yeah, beautiful.
I feel, I feel very important, I respectfully request an audience.
See that? See that?
Royalty.
Oh, well.
You know? Wish your crown, Paul.
Yeah. Left it a long time ago.
I got a hearing. Yeah, no, I got it. So what you have before, before you is, the long and short of it is, we replaced some K-9 vehicles within the town, and it was actually Lieutenant Olafland that oversees K-9 Division, that we actually put them out to other K-9 handlers. And, you know, you're talking about cars that we typically would get, you know, Chief Olafland knows about this, you get pennies on the dollar at the town auction. The town is doing very well with the system that we came up of basically selling them to another department when we were done with the use of them. So it's the two K-9 vehicles, that's what you have in front of you. I know Zach is very pleased with this, thinks we did very well, and it just needs the board's approval for consideration.
Paul?
Yes, yes, I think this is the most effective way to do it, because like I says, it's usually, you know, like I says, they're older vehicles, they're probably not cost-effective to even maintain anymore, and they're no longer needed. So I, and I believe any funds that they get from this method as well, which is a little more than you do if you had to auction them off, could go back to the, to the police department to pay for equipment or anything else.
Well, it goes in the general fund, actually.
Okay.
And it was a lot more than we got in?
Yeah.
The auctions.
Sure. So unless Tom wants to say, unless I?
Tom, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just that the funds do go back to the general fund, I think that this was an innovative approach, try to see if the town could recoup greater value from agencies that, you know, otherwise, frankly, that their equipment is in poor shape, and this will at least put them in the modicum of some decency as far as the safety of the vehicle. The vehicles that we're trading out, you know, we cut from them what we expected to as far as the life of the vehicle, and what we expected as far as performance and patrol. So I believe one of them may be a vehicle that we actually brought, where the K-9 officer transferred to us, that we purchased from that to that market. So we're doing pretty much what they did, and I want to congratulate the chief, because I do believe he's bringing in a substantial amount of money compared to if you just went out and did bits, you know, seal bits, you'd get pennies on the dollar. So, good job, chief. And I would second a motion to approve this.
A motion to?
Allow us to make it.
Yeah, sure, a motion to allow chief to sell the vehicles that were listed in, in the letter sent to Attorney Valani for this request.
And I second.
Before I make that unanimous, just for the general public, we're talking about a 2018 Ford Explorer and a 2020 Ford Explorer, this being 2025, and those vehicles use the patrol, they're tired and ready to go.
Sure.
So I would gladly make that unanimous. Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Thank you very much, chief.
Thanks, thanks, chief.
That's it, right?
Great night.
Okay.
Thank you.
See you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. See you.
Okay. Our next agenda item under scheduled appointments is our fire chief, Chief Nelson, and our deputy chief, Dettori. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Hello. All right, so it's, it's budget time again, but I just want to take a moment on the police cruisers, we've been the beneficiary three now, which I know has saved the town money because of our admin staff and the fire, you know, fire prevention duties, and we have an administrative captain now, so we're using former police cruisers. We, you know, we de-letter them and re-stripe them red, and for very low cost, you know, those cruisers continue to run. So, and, you know, not on patrol, obviously, you know, less emergent activities, but, you know, a great deal for us, so.
Sure.
So I appreciate that.
Good to hear.
I appreciate that. It is budget season, right? So I want to bring you back to last, well, FY '25, in the beginning, we talked about some projects and some programs that, that we wanted to achieve, and we got great support, and I really appreciate it, and I want to tell you where we are. We have established the fire captains' positions, and we have promoted lieutenants. So now, at both firehouses, we have supervisors around the clock. It took a while to, to get the captain established, you know, through civil service and writing the job descriptions and, and all that, you know, all the paperwork. But it's now, you know, almost permanent, because they have to go through testing with civil service, everything just takes time. But I want to tell you that our operation is night and day now, and I'm not exaggerating that. We were able to run two incidents at a time, we're able to be more efficient and separate, you know, the on-duty staff to do different things, and it, I just want to tell you that that support really paid off. It has been tremendous, and I think that the chief would agree with you.
Very good.
So that was part of the program, part of the project that we wanted to achieve. The other part of that was increasing the minimum staffing during the day, and we, we wanted to get to, you know, where we could run seven firefighters and two supervisors around the clock. For most of this fiscal year, we've, we've done that during the day, but dropped down at night, and that was to conserve overtime, because that's basically how this is funded, is through overtime. So we were, we agreed on a set amount of money on, on an overtime increase at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we were using that conservatively to make sure that we got through the year. There's been some staffing changes, some retirements, and now we're at the point, right around beginning of March, right, beginning of March, that we're running that staffing around the clock. So the nine that I'm looking for, the seven firefighters and the two supervisors, we're doing that around the clock, and if we have another person on duty, right, if we're at our full complement, then there's just that one more. But the key is, the minimum during the day is seven with two, and we've been able to staff the ladder truck around the clock with two people, which is so much better off than where we were.
That was a concern, that was a concern for us as well, chief.
Right. And, and so, you know, as a team, we got together and, you know, we had to figure out something, right? We had to make it better, we did, and I appreciate that. So we, we have the supervisors, we have the seven with two around the clock right now. What I'm looking for is to, you know, increase the overtime staffing money, or overtime money, to maintain that seven with two next fiscal year. And we know, by And we know, by the numbers that we ran last year, or the year that we're in, before the money was appropriated, we know we need $275,000 to do that around the clock. We know what the day shift costs, and we know what the night shift costs. So we need an increase of 275 in overtime to maintain the seven with the two at a minimum around the clock for FY '26. That would be priority one. That's what we feel is most important to continue.
Mm-hmm.
Priority two, and I think you have it in the handout, is to start to hire one firefighter a year for four years. That would bring our shift complements at maximum to 11 people, and at minimum to nine people where we are now. And by doing that, we're effectively going to decrease overtime. Because there'll be that much, that many more people on duty, and it requires a certain amount to be out before I hire overtime. So the more people on duty with less leave benefits, the less overtime. So that's priority two. And I just wanted to interject. So when we have seven with two, one of the, one of the new response methods we want to try is to staff a second light-duty rescue truck at Burt Street. And this would be done through what's called cross-staffing. So I'd still maintain four people on duty at Burt Street, but instead of taking the fire engine on a medical call, the first vehicle for a medical would be this rescue vehicle. And we already have
Makes sense.
Right. And, you know, I'm concerned about the cost of fire engines. Right now, you know, we're looking at one for the fall, and, you know, just as a side, it's, we're looking at about $1.2 million.
Wow.
So I'd like to reduce the wear and tear on those and use the, you know, the pickup truck model vehicle that we have for a fraction of the cost, and try and run things that way. And by having the minimum staffing of, you know, the seven firefighters, that keeps it standardized from day and night. I don't want to run it one way during the day and another way at night. I want to standardize the response. So basically, we're looking for overtime money, possibly hiring one firefighter, and I wanted to see what you thought about that.
Deputy Chief, anything you'd like to say?
Chief, pretty much anything, but one of the main things, before we had the reshuffle, the ratio for firefighters out before we had to hire overtime was three previously, and now it's two.
Cool.
And in some cases, one per shift as we navigate through the promotion. But when we're back to normal, it puts us at two, but by hiring, eventually we'll get back to our old ratio.
And I would say that if we could, if we could approach the maximum complement of nine firefighters on a shift with two supervisors, we would be well protected. It's approaching a standard that we're trying to reach. We haven't gotten there. Even with, even with, you know, 11 people on a shift, we will be approaching that standard, but we won't be there every day. But it's definitely a positive step.
Mm-hmm.
We have to look at that.
Thank you.
Michael, thank you. Chiefs, what you're saying makes a heck of a lot of sense, and like I said, the main crucial role of both police, fire, as well as the select board is to make sure that our residents' well-being and health and safety is protected at all times. This sounds like a good plan for you. What I liked was the part that you only go on one hire per year for four years, which, you know, makes it a little more easy to take, you know, as taxpayers. But like I said, the main thing to me, I'd like to have you go full steam ahead. But like Tom was mentioned, and Mike was mentioned, and too, it's, you know, times are tough right now. And like I said, I'd love to get the approval and the okay from finance, you know, Zach and the other two of my board members wants to hear from Zach, because that plays a crucial role, too, in whether other departments, like I told Chief Tizino, you know, we don't want other departments to, you know, to be hindered either, you know, when they, when they offer some pretty good services to the town as well. But like I said, safety and security is very important to us, and we'll do what we can for you, you know, I can tell you that. But like I said, I'd like to hear from Zach as well, like we would tell Chief Tizino, let's digest this, let's, any questions we have, we can call the two chiefs, Robbie, for what we, help us to make this decision, and also hear from Zach.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
I have a question. Chief, how much do we spend in overtime now, as far as just trying to maintain shift staff? In other words, we're increasing the requested $275,000, what do we spend in there?
So we started the project of promotions late because we were delayed with the captains. So that started in October of '24, October, November of '24, right? So at that point, you know, that's being tracked by the deputy, and we were at $56,000, I believe, for the day shift, and it would have been $70,000, do I have that right, for the night?
Yeah, to this point, yes.
Right, to this point. So for basically five months, it was $120,000 that we were, that we were going, that we should have spent. We didn't spend that because we weren't running the night shifts. We were just tracking it to see where we would be. So totaling all that together through the fiscal year, so far, you know, last, when we were presenting this project, we thought we would need $375,000. We got roughly $100,000 to put towards the project, and we're pretty much right on with the additional 275 to make the 375. So we figure we have 100, if we maintain the overtime funding, another 275 will put us there.
The, I'm very happy to hear about the ladder truck. To run one firefighter on a ladder truck is dangerous, absurd. I mean, to suggest that that person has stabilized that vehicle and start to run lines to, you know, water to that vehicle, and all the rest of it, one person, it's not going to happen. You're asking too much of them. And keep in mind, you know, we're, the structures in town, we have more and more buildings that are greater than two stories, and more coming. So, you know, to have one person on a ladder truck, I found it to be dangerous, not only for the firefighters, which I believe it is, but as well for the general public. So I'm very, very happy to hear that that's been addressed. I do want to remind the board that the chief came in with a proposal the past couple of years, and when we arrived at town meeting, there were changes in our budgetary circumstances, where he had to forego parts of his plan that this board approved. So just to keep that in mind, that I believe that his proposal that he's coming in before us is not new. It's simply, he's regathering the facts and circumstances as he presented them to the board and to town meeting, and he was willing to forego pressing, put it in that term that I would use, pressing that we meet the need that he had presented and we agreed to. This is not a new proposal to look to hire one firefighter over a period of four years. And even doing that, I agree with my colleague, Paul Mazakelli, that I think that also shows the strength of the chief's conviction, his understanding of the budgetary concerns of the community, his willingness to spread them, and he was willing to do that from the beginning. So I just didn't want us to institutionally forget the fact that what he's presenting tonight is not new. It's something that we already approved, and he was willing to forego some things for a period of time. So, but I, again, as was mentioned by my colleague, Paul Mazakelli, I do think it's very important that we do have a conversation with Zach Taylor, so that we have a better understanding of what he sees coming or not coming, and I think that's going to be hard to predict. And likewise with Brian Murray in his position as a state rep. But I, you know, chief and deputy chief, I thank you for bringing this information forward, as I did to police chief, that we have a clear understanding. And I think that you articulated exactly what's going to take place. And your thoughts of using a vehicle that we already have as contracted to an engine as the backup on rescue calls, I think in the long term, it's going to save this community a lot, given the value of engines. So I'll leave it at that, and I already took enough time. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You know, chief, I just want to make a point. You know, you make reference to the number of calls in a 24-hour period. A month ago, I was involved in a meeting at the hospital on a Monday, and it came up that on Sunday, prior day, there were over 100 patients inside the emergency room, forget the number of people that were in the waiting area, and people were actually walking out of the emergency room, it was so overwhelmed. The reason I bring that up is that one of the nurses was saying that people don't realize the number of ambulances that are backing into the back of the building. And I bring that up because the number of ambulances that are coming with citizens from Milford always are considered a medical call from the fire department. So in one day, in one day, in one instance, we had over 100 people inside the emergency room with ambulances still coming. Now, I understand COVID, flu, the four viruses that are going on, medical calls is what I'm getting at. And it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming to the hospital, to the emergency room, it's overwhelming to our fire and police departments that are responding to these calls. And so I, again, I go back to what I said to the police chief, we have a responsibility to make sure that our departments that are providing public safety have the tools that they need to do that. You know, when you came before us and you told us that, you know, the ladder truck was going out with one firefighter, I'd have anything I could do to drive that with five firefighters, you know? But now you get to the scene of a fire, and, you know, we talked about leveling and this, and, you know, we corrected it. So, you know, I commend you for coming, you know, to us, and to Selectman Olafland's point, really, this is something you've already proposed to us before. The question that I have for you, though, is, oh, one question that I have, under your example, priority two, if you add that one firefighter, do you have an idea what the impact would be to your overtime budget?
So we were, we were looking at it, if we had four, if we had hired, if we have four new firefighters, what would the impact be on the overtime? Would it decrease it by 100,000? Would it decrease it by 200,000? It's got to be in that ballpark. So one firefighter is only 25%. It's only that person is going to be assigned to one of four shifts. So it really only impacts one out of four. It takes a little while, I'll say roughly eight months, to get somebody onboarded through the fire academy and where they count as staffing. So we have to kind of, we have to, we're responsible for that salary, right? It's not, it's not going to decrease overtime for that eight months. But I can only see it as a positive impact.
Right.
It's going to decrease the amount, I'm not quite sure. I hate to put a dollar figure on it. We just know that once the project is completed, if approved, down the road, it will decrease overtime.
Okay, and the reason I bring that question up is, and not in a negative way, it's just that, you know, if in fact, you know, after we talked to, you know, Zach Taylor and the finance committee, and we did decide to move forward with hiring, you know, the first year one firefighter, it really is not going to have an impact on the overtime budget. So I want the, I want people to understand, you know, again, not in a negative way, I don't want them to say, well, you know, if they got their hands on this report, it's going to cost us roughly $115,000 to add a firefighter. You know, I don't want people out there saying, well, that should cut the overtime budget by, you know, over $100,000. No, that is not going to be the case, because it takes time to get that person trained, get them, you know, into the line of duty. And so I just want to be clear with that, that we're still going to be dealing with our overtime situation, which we have to. We have to provide the staffing to handle, you know, what the fire department is dealing with in our community.
Agreed.
You know, and to your point, adding that one firefighter is a positive step in the right direction.
That's right.
Yeah, so I commend you for that. So, you know, I agree with, you know, Selectman Mazakelli, Selectman Olafland, Selectman Olafland makes a great point. We don't know what's coming from the state, so we need to keep our state rep involved. We need to have a discussion with Zach Taylor. I can tell you personally, I'm with you 100%. You know, I'm in town pretty much all day long, I witness what's going on. I commend you for trying to use the rescue vehicles instead of the fire engines, but I also understand that there are times you have to use
Sure.
the fire engine. But, you know, I commend both of you for looking at that, looking at ways to be, you know, saving, you know, funds for the community, you know? Because ultimately, you know, that's where they come from, they come from taxes, you know? So, again, you know, I agree, let's, you know, I'm with you, I like your proposal, very well done. Again, you know, when I saw that number, over 16 calls in a 24-hour period, I'm like, wow. How do you do that with the staff? You know, but you, you know, we do it, you do it every single day. So thank you very much, and, you know, let's get Zach Taylor involved, and we'll move forward.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have you on as well for mutual aid.
Yes. So we have mutual aid agreements in our fire, within our fire district. So we belong to Massachusetts Fire District 14, that's our number. And so everybody in that, in those 23 cities and towns, we have mutual aid agreements with, that are written, that are signed. There are some others that we do not have written agreements with that we would like to establish. And I began that process through a form, a template, a mutual aid, you know, agreement from one of our neighbors, that Attorney Murray and Attorney Malani looked over and approved. And I'm just looking for the board's approval to go forward with those mutual aid agreements in writing. One of them is Medway.
Yep.
And I had also approached Upton and Mendon for written agreements, just to, just to have it solidified and for licensing purposes for
Especially with their neighboring towns, too.
Right.
I mean, very convenient.
Makes perfect sense.
Sure does.
So we're just looking for your approval for that.
Motion to approve the mutual aid agreement. It also combines other resources. Not one municipality has every resource imaginable. So therefore, by, you know, by sharing and using other municipalities, they may have a resource that we don't have, you know? So that helps, you know, improve public health and safety, and I make a motion that we approve the mutual aid.
Could you just add in there, giving me the authority to sign the agreement so we can get it? That's how it was set up. Giving me the authority to sign?
Yeah, right, okay. Then to give town administrator Attorney Malani authority to sign the agreement for us as well.
I would second that, and I just remind the board, the tanker truck that we picked up that goes off-road
Mm-hmm.
into the woods, I believe it came from it.
Came from Medway, yes, it did.
One of them, right?
It was like a real old one, right? But it still ran.
Never too old of this carrier of water.
That's true. That's for sure.
That's my motto.
Can you second that, Tom?
I most certainly do.
Tom and I will make that unanimous roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good job. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next agenda item is Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. One, I'm very pleased to report the new flooring project at Town Hall is now completed. I think you've all seen it. It includes carpeting of all offices, vinyl laminated flooring in the first floor common areas. And we also were able, given the nice low bid, that we were able to replace the stair treads on the stairways. Special thanks to Facilities Director Carlos Benjamin and Maintenance Supervisor Jay Vaz. They were the two primary people overseeing what I call a very successful project. I'm also happy to report we've received final confirmation from State Rep, uh, State Senator, excuse me, Becca Roush, that the town will be receiving an earmark in the amount of $20,000. This will be used to make needed repairs to the sprinkler system here at Town Hall. So I want to thank her for her work and effort in securing the earmark for the town. And then finally, I have been notified by Tyler Newhall. He's the Legislative Director for the Emergency Assistance and Livable Communities. There is a planned closure of the Milford Best Western Inn as an emergency assistance family shelter. It's scheduled to be closed no later than Wednesday, December 31st, so the end of this year. This is part of the state's efforts to phase out the use of hotels as emergency assistance shelters by the end of this year. In the coming months, the organization called Making Opportunities Count, they will continue to support families with case management and to secure permanent housing. It is their shared goal to support as many families as possible to exit the shelter system into safe, stable housing prior to its closing. So there are plans in place for the transition. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Good to hear. Paul, any questions?
No, just to thank Carlos and Mr. Vaz for their supervision because they, this company did do a fantastic job on the floors.
Very nice job. Very pleased.
It really did.
Yes.
Tom?
I have no comments. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, thanks, Rick.
And again, if I could echo Selectman Mazakelli's comments, please thank Carlos and Jason Vaz. If you came into Town Hall when the carpet was being done and you saw everything in the hallways and the boxes and the furniture and it was quite a job. And to you as well, Rick, thank you very, very much for a job well done.
Thank you.
And it's encouraging to hear that the state is working towards an end date for the use of the hotels, particularly in our community, but all communities around the state. That's a positive. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is old business. Does anybody have any old business?
No.
Tom?
I do not.
And I do not as well. So the next is new business and we do have a common vicular license request from Saber de Tierra Accu Incorporated, which is looking for a common vicular license. It's located at a business 296 Main Street in Milford. Their operation hours are Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We do have a department head review form and the building commissioner, CB zone occupancy load is 60. Building and restrooms are accessible. Town planner is okay, no change of actual use. Town treasurer, collector, there are no outstanding liens. The fire chief has no objections. The police chief has approved it as well. And the board of health has no violations. And again, this is a request for a common vicular license located at 296 Main Street and it's Saber de Tierra Accu Incorporated. And with that, I'll ask for a motion?
A motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the common vicular's application for Saber de Mitteria for a new common vicular's license. The business is located at 296 Main Street, Milford, and all paperwork is in order and I make a motion that we approve it.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Next on the new business? Roll call, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the new business, Town Administrator, the award of the contract for installing showers and lockers at the police station.
Yeah, this is something we were able to do because again, we received a very good bid for the demolition of the lockers and such at the police station. So we're going to be able to do a little additional work. We did send out three requests for quotes. Only one responded, that was Fox Painting Inc., Company Inc., and the quote amount is $48,000.
Motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the bid for the installation of showers at Milford Police Station to Fox Painting Company Incorporated at 26A Woody Hill Road, Hope Valley, Rhode Island for $48,000.
And I would make that unanimous. Roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. And again, under new business, we have the Town Administrator, Article III recommendations.
Yeah, before you, the Article III recommendations, I'm believing the Personnel Board is going to give 3% to other personnel. The recommendation here would be 3%. Again, we'll look at it in the overall budget, but that would be the recommendation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, recommendation to approve the Article III for full-time and part-time employees at 3%. That was brought by the Personnel Board.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous with a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. I've seen nobody in our audience tonight. Is there anybody online?
No online.
And so there was nobody online, so we do not have anybody for invitation to speak. Next agenda item is correspondents. Paul, do you have any correspondents?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman, not this time.
Tom?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I do. I received correspondence from the MWRTA, which is the Bus Authority that runs the buses here in Milford that you see running around. With the help of Jim Nie, who's the administrator of the MWRTA, which is located in Framingham, he submitted for a grant to enhance the bus service within our community to allow for, the best way to describe it is, it's kind of almost like an Uber service where people are going to be able to request particular times and days that they need to be picked up because they can't, you know, necessarily get to the bus stops. Jim submitted for the grant. It was awarded to us. We're in the process, or I should say, he's in the process right now of getting a meeting with the senior center, but, you know, the Commission on Disability, all the people that are involved, all the people that will be using this enhanced service to our bus service in this community. And then there'll be a meeting within our community. But it's good news because I was in a meeting over a year ago with Jim and representatives from the community and it was really, you know, they were strongly recommending that we come forward with something to, you know, service individuals that needed enhanced, you know, services other than the general, for example, the bus stops here at Town Hall, stop and shop. They needed more, you know, they needed more service individually, I guess is a way to put it, prioritize services. And this grant is going to allow us to do that. So that's good news and that's all I have.
Thank you, Michael.
And we did have an executive session this evening. It has been canceled. So there is no executive session this evening, even though it is listed on our agenda. Again, I go back to saying it has been canceled. So with that, I would ask a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Motion, Mr. Chair, to adjourn.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would make that unanimous with a roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye as well. And with that, we say good evening. Thank you very much for your patience earlier when we put a little delay in our meeting to take some pictures with the officer that received a prestigious award. Again, thank you for your patience. Thank you for watching and we hope that you have a nice rest of the week. Thank you.
Good night.